All right. Well, we'll get it started then. All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Fortuna Planning Commission for February ninth. Meetings being held in accordance with the Brown Act. As current with the COVID regulations from the Governor's Emergency Act. They'll be for people at home that are watching or anyone won't want to participate. We'll be flashing up on the screen. We'd do that. So we're going to open with the flag salute. I'm going to do the flag salute. No disrespect meant as far as not standing and that kind of thing. It's what we're having to deal with right now. So. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I get a roll call, please?
Right. Commissioner Blakely.
Here.
Commissioner Bradley, I don't see him. Commissioner Church.
Here.
Commissioner Hallie.
Here.
Chairman Mobley.
Here.
And Vice Chair Rogers and Commissioner Saitz let me know that they would not be attending this evening. That's everything.
Okay. All right. So can we get approval of the January twenty sixth? Minutes, please.
One of you commissioners that was present because I wasn't. Stephanie, you're muted.
Okay, I move to approve the minutes. For the December eighth meeting.
When is January twenty six?
January twenty six, sorry.
I'll second that.
Thank you. So now we're going to open up to roll call. Oral comments from the public. Members of the public can be heard on any item that is not on the agenda tonight. Please be aware that by law, the commission cannot deliberate or take any action on any. Thing presented during oral comment. So this is the time if anybody has anything to say out there in the world that wants to talk to us. They're going to flash some numbers up on the screen. And. Please call in. We'd like to hear from you. You go. Are we getting anything coming across? Anybody talking to us? Don't hear anything. All right. Since we're not hearing nothing. Motion to close public comment.
I'll make a motion to close public comment.
I'll second.
All right. All right. So tonight we got a order of business is. Consideration of design review and public hearing to consider a conditional use permit. To operate accurate termite and pest solutions in the downtown retail commercial district. That is Mike, Michael Beck in construction is on construction. So can we get some background on this, please?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Mobley and planning commissioners. I'm going to share the, I'll go through the slides. And. Show you the location and the. Describe the project. Okay. Okay. So on the overhead, the project location. This is a conditionally used permit request to operate a termite and pest control business. It is located in the downtown retail commercial district. And the project location is Main Street between Seventh and Eighth. So it's facing Main Street. And this is the parcel itself. Seventh Street is here and then there's Dave's Auto Electric to the north or the east and then Eighth Street is further to the east. And you can see an alley does run. It's just a fifteen foot alley runs between the two blocks, two corners. And then here's the aerial. Main Street at the top. And you can see there is an existing building. It's been used as an office. You know, it is like an older style historic type of home. And it has been used for an office in the, in the, you know, years past. And then there is a storage building and this is the building to be replaced. And used for the business storage. And then let's see. We'll get to the site plan next. This is, this just shows the zoning. So the retail commercial here. Is the downtown zone. So it's considered the historic, you know, central business district. With the historic types of businesses that run down Main Street and then the older homes in the neighborhood around. So the, the pink to the, to the west, northwest is also commercial, but it's the more general commercial thoroughfare. So. You know, the section of Main Street is definitely a commercial neighborhood. The retail commercial is generally. Hello? Oh, the retail commercial is generally more geared towards offices and retail uses and then. Some other types of service businesses. This type of business is allowed as a conditional use permit. So that's why it's been brought before the planning commission. And then this is the site plan. So this is an approximately ten thousand square foot parcel. You can see the, the office building here. They did recently remodel it. So. You know, if you've driven by and seen it, it looks really nice. It's got, you know, fresh. Paint and a new landing, a porch landing, and it's got a nice ADA compliant ramp. And. News, I don't want to. The interior has been remodeled as well. So it's, you know, it's a really fresh, nice office now. And. And then the, oh, and then they're adding, they will be adding, I think it is paved now. So the parking will be here. So right now there's no parking onsite. It's just all. Grass at this was probably, I'm sure this little building was, you know, like an old garage from the old days. And they will be adding parking adjacent to the proposed new storage building here. So that current. Well, I'll go back. So all of the work that's being done on the office building is principally permitted because an office is principally permitted in that downtown zone. And they didn't do any significant exterior changes and they kept the colors the same. So that did not come to design review. The. But they are proposing to replace the existing storage building and it's a five hundred square foot building and add a nine hundred sixty square foot building. And that would be. The storage of the, you know, the materials and equipment that they use for the business and how that operates is that. The service workers keep the trucks, you know, drive the trucks home every night. And so in the morning, it would just be a matter of. Pulling up and getting their supplies and getting their work orders and then leaving the site. So there's really no. There's no long-term parking of the service trucks. This would be the loading area for that. Let's see. So. So again, you know, it is in the downtown zone, the retail commercial zone. And the list of principally permitted uses again offer, you know, really is restricted to offices and retail and services. And the closest, the code does allow consideration of, you know, businesses for conditional uses. If it's a business that's similar to in nature. A listed use. So the closest use would be the contractors shops and yards. And the termite and pest control shop is similar in nature to a contractor shop. You know, it doesn't normally attract shoppers or, you know, visitors to the business. It's employees arrive and they obtain their tools and supplies and then they leave and travel to a specific location similar, you know, to a contractor's activity. The contract is entered into with the client and the business operator. Must be trained and licensed by the state of California. So, you know, in most ways it is similar to a contractor shop and it's the closest use. So that's the, really the planning commission's. Decision in improve, in approving or considering this use permit is, you know, is it appropriate for the location? And is it similar to a use that's listed, which would be a contractor shop? And in the attachment to the resolution, there are the findings and, you know, the listed findings. You've been provided with an explanation as to why, you know, it meets public safety. It's a suitable use for the site and we can review those if, if you wanted to go over them. And then the, the chemicals, the pest chemicals are regulated by the state. So the, you know, the licensed operator. Will be storing those and handling them and, you know, the employees will be using them as required. By the California code. We don't have a local code, so the city doesn't, you know, we're not. In the position to evaluate that, but there, you know, it's controlled by the state and by the, by the operator and their license. So as a condition of approval, we would be asking them to demonstrate that they are licensed. And in addition to that, the fire department did save a referral for this project and. The fire chief did indicate that, I think he said that he has the list there or that he would need the list of chemicals. So they. The fire department, you know, obtains a list of chemicals that are stored so that if there is a fire, they would know how, what they're dealing with. That's a condition of approval.
I did take the list down to the fire department several months ago.
You did take it?
Yeah, and I gave it to Lon.
Okay, I thought so. I mean, he, he did respond that he had it, but I just. You know, I wasn't quite sure if he would get it or if he has it in his possession. So that's good. That's fine. It is a condition. So. And he did indicate that he has it. So that's the use permit. In addition, you have before you a design review resolution. And that would be for the proposed new metal building. And again, it is a nine hundred sixty square foot. Building and this is basically the design. So, you know, it's, it's standard. It's twenty four feet. That's the east-west facing. So that would be facing Seventh Street and the alley and it's got a roll door and a mandor. And then this is the side facing the alley. And then the long way would be facing Main Street. And it's got, you know, moderately pitched roof. The colors would be the same as the main building, the office building there, which would be gray, white trim and a charcoal roof. And then this is a simulation of the office building and then in relation. To the, the metal shed. So you can kind of see the scale of both of those. And then this is the recently remodeled. Building. I mean, I think it looks better in real life rather than on the picture, but it looks, I think it looks really nice. When I drive by, it's always, you know, since it's been spruced up, it looks a lot better. And then this is the location of the existing building. So this is five hundred square feet and then the proposed building. Will be nine hundred and sixty. So I guess that's almost double, but smaller than the, the building behind it. So it's going to be shorter and slightly smaller. The, the bushes have been removed, but we do have a condition of approval that they will plant some bushes or small trees along that side of the building. I think they do have a plan to landscape the site. We didn't have a submitted landscaping plan though. And then this is the building. It is, they did frame it. So I went ahead and took a picture of that. This is from Seventh Street looking. Eastward. And then oops, wrong way. And then this is from Main Street. I think it looks a little larger here because it's kind of looking up. But it does kind of show the scale. Adjacent to that, that building next to it. So that's all I have. Let's see, a couple of conditions I'll call out. They didn't want to use the alley for access. The city, city public works department would have required improvements. So the public works director was fine with them using Seventh Street as an access. I did add, we have a condition of approval, just calling that out, that if they do change their plan to, to, you know, want to use the alley, then that would require. Plot plan submitted and approval by the city engineer, public works director. But I don't think they'll be using it this way because they do have their door on the other side anyway. So. No outdoor storage of materials or equipment. And that's about it. I mean, there are other conditions, I think. If you have any questions about those, let me know. And I will hand that back to the chairman.
All right. Thank you, Liz. Okay, so. Back to the commissioners. Anybody have anything? They want to bring up, talk about? Questions about?
Yeah, I'm a little confused. It's why construction is going before this has been approved.
That's my understanding. A building permit has not been issued.
Yeah, it has not. It's ready to be issued with your guys' approval on that. I was a little surprised the building was going up today. I knew that the foundation had gone in because they were trying to beat the weather and so on, but they did put the slab in. And I knew that was there. Didn't know the building went up today until I was informed. So a little more jump in the gun than I was. They were, I was anticipating they were going to do. So.
So if we vote no tonight, then you're going to come all back down.
Well, that's one way of doing it.
Mike. Okay, anybody else got anything?
I'm not happy about the end runs around the planning commission.
Can I, may I? I have two things. One, sorry.
You have a lot of.
Can you guys hear me okay now? Sorry about that.
Oh yeah, that's better.
Can you hear me or not hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
So, yes, I can hear you talk. Okay, I see Chairman Mobley, can you hear me?
Come on out.
Okay, now I can hear you too. Sorry about that.
That's all right. Tell me all about it.
So we were watching on our larger screen because I have, so okay, sorry. My name is Erica Thompson. I'm a representative of Plum Construction and Mr. Deck here, we're the contractor on the job. As far as anyone trying. I'd like to thank everyone for being here tonight and I'd like to thank the commission for, for coming together and Liz. And Katie in the planning department, you guys were really instrumental in helping us. Get through this Gary, you as well. So I want to just bring that up and say thank you so much for all of the help that you've been giving us and emails and back and forth. We really appreciate it. There was never any attempt to go around the design review. That's not what we were trying to do. I realize that as the planning commission of Fortuna, that you guys' job is to, you know, the aesthetics and the design of the town, which we care very much about as well. But my job as a contractor is also to try and save my customer as much money as possible. And when he's purchased a building for, you know, north of two hundred thousand or purchased the property for two hundred thousand and then has put in two hundred thousand dollars worth of improvements. And is bringing his business to this town, the thought of asking him to pay an additional twenty five thousand dollars to. Put up a hardy siding facade on a metal storage building was something that we. Did not agree with. And so we kind of put things aside for a while. To kind of reassess on what we could do and try to make this work and come up with different options. And then when I, we were getting done with the front building, the tenant, Mr. Duck needed to move in as soon as possible and get his business from Eureka, which he moved here to Fortuna. And so it kind of became about push to shut, right? And so I went to, to Gary and I talked to Katie and they talked to Liz. And I said, this is what we're proposing. It's a gray wall. We're putting it in front of another gray wall because if we did nothing, what would you guys be looking at but that asbestos gray siding on the building behind it? And when I left that meeting, it was under the impression that we could begin. So I realized that we didn't have proper paperwork in place, but. We didn't mean to go around. I just want you guys to know that. So we're not trying to circumvent anything. We're just trying to get our customer. Into their building so they can get back to what they do best and that's making money and being a part of our community. As far as what the findings are in, you know, Liz and Katie did an excellent job here. We are agree. With everything that's in here, we are so grateful if the design, if the commissioners are. Willing to compromise with just the trees to make it more of a screened area so that we don't, so that we can save this business owner that kind of money. Putting up a fake facade and it matches, it's going to match the front building. And. Reality is, is that by the time it's all done and yes, there's landscaping, it's going to look very clean, very crisp and nice and new. And I know we don't want to be staring at a bunch of metal buildings. Everywhere, but it is very much. In the neighborhood with a bunch of metal buildings. So, you know, we kind of felt like we were being held to the standard that is not. Necessarily what's going on in the rest of the neighborhood. So with all the other buildings that are there. We have one consideration that we would ask for in the, if it is decided that the trees. Would be a sufficient screening for the metal building so that we can break up that wall because I understand what you guys are trying to do is break up that. Look of that metal wall, especially facing Main Street. As it's written in here, it makes it sound like we would put the trees up against the metal building. What we propose is to bring the row of trees forward. To right about, if you look at, I can't share my screen. So I have no way of showing you exactly what I'm talking about. If, if you look at the aerial view, I don't know if Katie or. Or Liz can show us that aerial view so you guys can see what I'm talking about. But when you're looking down, there's that big green bush that is next to the front building on. Here we go. That. The picture there. Right there. Okay. So looking at the front building, you guys see that green bush that's right in the, on the corner there, kind of back towards, yes, thank you, right there. What we propose is actually to remove that bush, but replace it with a line. Of conifers or some type of evergreen tree that would create basically a wall, a shrubbery. Greenery wall right there, which would in turn kind of camouflage the whole area behind it and the metal building. And so that would be the only consideration that we would ask for that is not listed out in your, in your project documents. But I do want to reiterate that no one was trying to go around anything. It just got to a situation where we needed to get this done and. We thought that we were working on a verbal and that was a miscommunication and we do apologize for that, but we. We're not trying to work around anybody. We just want to get it done for our customer. And, and for the town because we want to have it cleaned up. Everyone wants it done. We know that right now it's kind of an eyesore and we're, we're working hard. To make it a gem and that's what we want it to be. So, and we hope that you guys will feel that way too. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank, thank you. Okay, commissioners, anybody have anything they'd like to bring up?
I don't have a problem with the way the building is designed. I don't have a problem that it's a metal building. I don't have a problem with the color of it. My problem was it looks like. Construction preceded the approval of this permit. And I don't think that's a good thing.
Yeah, we've, we've been through that before in the past and. It, sometimes it came out okay and sometimes it didn't. So I got questions for staff. Was everybody in the neighborhood. Notified like they're supposed to be?
Yes, three hundred foot radius every time.
Okay, no, you do, but I gotta ask. All right.
And I have a question. Do in a design review, don't we usually have the landscaping submitted with it? I just, one of the things I was looking at and I was going to bring it up tonight, which has kind of been alluded to. I feel like we had a part, a partial presentation of what. The design review is, but it's not complete. And I just have a hard time. I guess approving something if I don't see everything that's going to be submitted other than, and then don't take this wrong, Erica, but. You know, you're, you're bringing something and we're talking about it, but I don't have anything that's been presented to us other than a verbal confirmation that we're going to do this. And. I have a hard time going off of something that's just a verbal and not something in writing and presented and to the town that then comes through to us for approval.
Liz, you're muted.
Go ahead.
Yeah, landscaping plans are sometimes deferred until, you know, usually we defer them till prior to occupancy, but I think in this case, as soon as that building's up. It sounds like they're going to need to move in immediately. So we wouldn't, you know, that really wouldn't give us the leverage to. Make sure it gets done. But, you know, I think because of. You know, the, just the sincerity everybody, of everybody here and then, and then wanting to do a good job. I mean, I, you know, they did a really nice job on the remodeling and I can't see that they're not going to. Want to, you know, have nice landscaping on the site, you know, there's no indication of that. Let's see, but the condition.
We can't, we can't add, we can't add some verbiage into the building permit. At the same time that landscaped will be, it'll be approved, you know, if it gets approved through planning and stuff like that and their agreements with what they're, what they're saying and that sort of thing. Now, that's when we finally sign off on that building.
Can our.
Can I add something to Gary's? If we do that, can't we make that approval for the landscaping on staff level? It doesn't have to come to planning commission to delay the.
Oh, oh, definitely, definitely. Probably the, that would be the way I'd recommend it is.
They just put it into the motion that they're having to.
Landscaping.
Landscape has to conform to city standards or whatever they want. You know, you want to put it in.
Yeah, the, so the connection does ask for a landscaping plan. But then it says to be approved by staff or shall be referred to the planning commission for design review approval. So it's really up to the planning commission.
And I understand the time element, like she's saying, you know, get the, you know, Mike's company up and running. I, I appreciate that. I'm a businessman too and any delays is, it costs money. That's what I'm saying. Instead of having to come to the planning commission, we let it happen at staff level. So it doesn't delay anything another couple of weeks or whatever, based on our schedule.
Mr. Deck and Ms. Thompson, I, we're, we're here for you. But we do, we like to do things in an orderly fashion. That's my only. But we do, we like to do things in an orderly fashion. That's my only problem here tonight. Is it's not with your business or with your project at all. I think it's great.
But like we said, we've seen it go both directions when somebody's gotten this far where it all of a sudden got turned back and. Had to get delayed even longer because of. Something like this going on.
Could we, could we develop like a schedule if Mr. Deck and Ms. Thompson? You know, would propose a ti- a timeline of when a landscaping plan would be submitted and then. When the landscaping would be installed.
Can we just make it, can't we just make it part of the conditional use permit that it. Part of the motion that it's in the conditional use permit that they're gonna conform.
Yeah, prior to occupancy of the building.
There you go.
Okay, that's, that's normally. It's something that can be enforced because we'll have it in the, in the.
Ms. Thompson, is that satisfactory to you?
Yes, absolutely. We can get something together. I would like to ask that the. Tree screening on the building be part of that landscaping plan so that we can show you guys exactly. What our ideas are with that, so you can see that in real time. Would that be acceptable?
They're just gonna make it part of the conditional use, Erica. We're just gonna make it.
I'm having such a hard time hearing you guys, I'm sorry.
Just gonna make that part of the, the motion that it's in there and then you're just gonna be dealing with the city and you don't have to come back and see us no more.
Okay, thank you. And I promise we'll never get.
You don't have to come back and see us and it'll be all fine. I think it'll, I, I, I'm sure that you, you guys are gonna do. The right thing. I, I, I got every hope and prayer that you do. I know you guys always do. So there's no problem with that. Alright, so right now, let's open it up to public comment, keep this thing moving. Members of the public, again, we're gonna flash it up on the screen. If you have any comments on this project, have any questions on this comment? Please call in or join into the meeting. We'd love to hear from you. Why we're doing that and waiting for people, I want to ask question. I know with all the chemicals and all that kind of stuff, Mike, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, I know with all that kind of good stuff going on, I know you gotta go through the, all the good stuff with the county and. All the environmental health and all that kind of good stuff also. I know we have to, so I guarantee you have to. When doing so, the two things would be security on that building where the chemicals are stored. And fire safety on that building with the chemicals stored. There's only two questions.
Alright, so, security on it, I, it's, it's wired to advanced security. So if anyone opens a door or anything when we're closed, there would be an alarm that goes off. As well as motion sensors inside. I have five video surveillance cameras mounted in the yard that is also. Done through advanced security that monitors all aspects of the property. Inside the, the metal building. All of the chemicals are going to be stored in a locked cabinet. That is being built in there that will actually have locks on it so they can't be opened. All of that stuff is, is approved by the, the county ag department. As far as following the guidelines for storing my chemical, as well as the structural pest control board. And the Department of Pesticide Regulations.
There you go. I, I knew you had a bunch of hoops to jump through, so that way people at home that anybody actually listen. Would know what you're doing. You had it all ready to go. Okay, are we hearing anybody from the outside? Anybody calling in? Wanted to talk about it? Katie, you there? Sorry about that. Anybody hear me?
Nobody called in.
Okay, thank you. Okay, looking for.
Comment.
Can we get a second?
I'll second that.
Alright. Okay, so back to planning commission. Anybody else got any questions, comments, concerns? Anything they want to talk about? Any motion that needed to be made?
Well, we have two motions that we have to be making here tonight, correct?
Exactly. And then you're gonna add some verbiage in about the. In the motion about the.
Landscaping in staff level. I'll make an attempt at that motion then. I'll make the motion to adopt resolution number P dash two zero two one dash three zero five seven. A resolution of the planning commission of the city of Fortuna approving a conditional use permit. For a termite pest control facility in the retail commercial RC district. With the condition that they meet the light landscaping requirements as dictated by the city of Fortuna and approved at staff level.
I'll second that.
Okay, can, Katie, can I get a roll call, please?
Alright, Commissioner Blakely?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Commissioner Church?
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie?
Yes.
Chairman Mobley?
Yes. Okay, need a second motion.
I'll make the motion to adopt resolution number P dash two zero two one dash three zero five eight. Resolution of the planning commission of the city of Fortuna approving design review for a new metal storage building in the retail commercial RC district.
I'll second that. Alright, roll call vote, Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakely?
Yes.
Commissioner Church?
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie?
Yes.
And Chairman Mobley?
Chris.
I think his screen is frozen.
I think he's frozen.
Wow, we lost our chairman.
Yeah, I just got kicked out for a second, sorry. So you guys there still? I'm sorry.
You need a yes vote or a no vote?
I am a yes vote. Okay, so we all good?
I just want to say thank you again to the commissioners and to Gary in the building department and Katie and Liz in the planning department. Thank you very much, you guys. I know this was a less than ideal thing, but we are very, very glad to, to be here at this point and to get it done. And we are very thankful for your time and efforts tonight.
Alright, thanks.
You're most welcome.
You're welcome.
I thank all of you also. And I know you'll be happy with what that looks like down on Main Street once it's completed.
Mike, welcome back to Fortuna.
Thank you.
I already like what you've done with the building, so.
Me too.
The yard will be meticulous too. Thank you.
Alright, so back to staff. Can you got anything going on staff report?
Um, the only thing I would call out, I don't have anything to report, but if you have any questions about anything going on in the city, let me know. The next planning commission meeting is scheduled for February twenty third. That will be held. And the only item on the agenda at this point is the conditionally use permit for the proposed. Roneville Road Fire Station. You may have heard about that, I think now that it's been publicly noticed. And it's on the, you know, it's on the website and it's been published in the paper and we've sent out the property notices last week. And so there is talk about it. Information on that project is available on the city's website. At this point, the environmental document, which is a. Called an initial study mitigated negative declaration that has been prepared. Submitted to the state circulated to different agencies and is posted on the website. So if anybody's interested in reading that. You know, it has a very detailed project description and a lot of discussion about various components and the impact on the environment. And how it's mitigated. That document is something that will come to the planning commission. So next, at that next meeting, there's two approvals. The first one is to adopt that mitigated negative declaration. And then the second will be to consider and approve the conditionally use permit. So. It will get this staff report out on the usual time, you know, the, the week before the meeting. But all of the, really all of the relevant information is in that report. If you wanted to take a peek at that, I think on the website, you need to go to community development. And then click on, I think it's documents, Katie.
You'll go to the government and then public notices and then it's under community development notices.
Okay, so you have to kind of look around for a little bit, unless you remember that pathway that she just described. So that's all.
That's it. Alright, anybody got anything they want to bring up? I guess we're looking for a motion to close. Thank you all.
I'll make the motion to close.
Second.
Katie, one more time?
Roll call vote, Commissioner Blakely?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Commissioner Church?
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie?
Yes.
And Chairman Mobley?
Thank you, yes.
Liz and Katie, thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone.